All right, Mr. Strain.
Great.
You're good.
Okay. Good afternoon, fellow trustees and our viewing audience. We'll be interacting and hearing from the final candidate in our presidential search. Dr. Williams, are you available? Are you on? I know I'm not seeing you. Okay, good, good, good. If you'd like, then you may go ahead and give us your opening statements and opening presentations, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Swoop, can you help Dr. Nash pull up our brief presentation? As they pull this up to the trustees, and to the, next slide, please. To the Roger University family, to the committee, the search forum, firm, the faculty staff and students, alumni, and all of our campus and community leaders, I would first like to express my gratitude in having this opportunity. This is not an opportunity that many people get. And have the opportunity to talk and share my ideas and dialogue about higher education governance in general, and my vision and perspective regarding our institution in particular, is indeed an honor and I'm very grateful to have that opportunity. This institution is a historic institution with a proud tradition and legacy. It's land-grant, and it has excellent land-grant programs with excellent liberal arts programs as well. One of the reasons I endeavored to come here and endeavor to stay is because it does have excellent academic programs and excellent faculty, wonderful students, and doctoral programs and master's programs that are second to none and a robust research apparatus as well. What's very unique to me is our governance structure, both the content, meaning the makeup and the context, which is how we operate. That structure allows us to do things and accomplish things, both academically and with other programmatic initiatives that otherwise we wouldn't be able to. In some states, 1890 institutions can't do some of the things that we do, i.e. have graduate programs that are cutting-edge and STEM-based, implement master's programs and have the programmatic initiatives that are that sometimes require the approval of a system or legislature. And so we've been able to do some creative things that in some other states we would not be able to do. Next slide, please. Now, just a brief update on my background. I'm from rural southwest Georgia, right on the Chattahoochee River, and left high school and went to an attended Fort Valley State, where I majored in agronomy or plantar soil science. And left there and went to Ohio State University and then the University of Maryland at College Park to earn a terminal degree. All three of those are land-grant institutions, one 1890 and two 1862s. And post-graduation with a terminal degree, I've worked at six 1890 land-grant institutions solidly in both administration and in the professorate. Southern University, I was a director of land-grant consent degree research center, assistant professor. Then I moved to Alcorn to serve in a sub-cabinet position with Dr. Clint Bristow, director of institutional research in collaboration for their SAC COC submission. And from there to Florida A&amp;M, where I was director of Division of Agricultural Sciences and associate professor. And then South Carolina State for brief stint as ABP for Student Affairs, associate professor. Then Fort Valley as executive vice president, vice president and professor. And then Alabama Agriculture and Mechanical as provost, vice president of academic affairs and research and professor. Next slide, please. Just briefly on my vision, it is centered in institutional effectiveness, which means investment input. And as a result of your investment and your inputs, then what are the outcomes? And that requires a degree of efficiency. But to accomplish that, there must be implicit in the process shared governance from board of trustees down to staff. And so we always like to say that we push faculty, which are the intellectual center of any institution, to the center of discussion and decision-making. And hopefully that will affect student outcomes. And our focus has to be on those students' outcomes, which are four-pronged approach, which is recruitment, retention, persistence, and graduation placement. And to do that, we must stay focused and be committed to what our board-approved master plans are and what our strategic plan is. And as you know, that strategic plan is up in 2025. So shortly, I'm sure the institution will endeavor to relook at and extend that strategic plan or update it. One of my priorities has been and will continue to be of building a credential incredible faculty. It is the faculty that are the heartbeat of an institution, is the faculty at the core of governance, and faculty control the curriculum. And that is at the core of best practices and helping us to maintain a culture of compliance across the institution. Next slide. Our mission is very clear. I don't have any new vision. The mission is land-grant, and we stand solidly in the land-grant tradition. And in that land-grant tradition, we will work and endeavor to continue to enhance our relationships with the board of trustees. We have to build partnerships with alumni. And we do that partially through our advancement in public relations and reimaging, reimagining, and rebranding. And per that and per assessments and evaluation, then we have targeted marketing initiatives where we target particular cohorts and populations. And part of that targeting will be to enhance and increase our legislative support, focusing on our governmental agencies and partners in Huntsville, and then the seat of government for the state of Alabama, Montgomery, and of course, the government agencies and Senate and Congress and their staffs in Washington. Next slide. Part of our vision will be to overtake our regional 1890 aspirant peers. We have three or so that we have deemed to be our aspirant peers in most statistical measures, which will include students and federal grants and contracts, as well as facilities and infrastructure. We want to expand our brand from being statewide or even regional to a global brand. We've done pretty well in China. We like to expand our footprint into Africa, into the Caribbean, into South and Central America, and maybe even other third world countries or developing countries, as we say. We're going to continue some of our work in facilities renovation and restoration. And one of the things that we would do in partnership with our local CDC, with AMU Rise Foundation and our cooperative extension program, part of the cooperative extension system, is focus on economic development in North Huntsville collaboratively with our Reimagine Campaign. Next slide, please. To do this, you need money. And so we'll focus on the several revenue streams. I won't go over them right now. Most of you know what they are. They're four or five. And the strategy to do that requires personnel, it requires expertise, it requires skill sets. So we want to build and enhance our capacity in those areas and focus on that. And then engage in a incessant process of friend-raising. Friend-raising both individually, donor and gifts, friend-raising in the corporate sector, friend-raising in the government sector, and friend-raising in the legislative and government sector. All that under umbrella and philosophy and guidance of Community University with AMU Reimagine, Rebranded, ReImaged being the ultimate guide to help us to get to that global footprint that we so desire. Next slide. Now, I talked about what we'd like to do somewhat, but this is some of the things that we have done, because I've been here for eleven and a half years, or going on twelve. And we've had some very significant outcomes. We can't list all of them, but just, you know, some of the things that we think are very laudable and applaudable is that we've been able, from fiscal year '09 to fiscal year '20, to enhance our sponsor programs' operations. And we've increased the federal funds that we've processed by 100%. One year, we were designated by APLU, the Association of Public and Land Grant Universities, as the institution with the largest increase in federal awards for research. And so we're very proud of that designation, and we intend to have that designation again whenever we measure it or compare it by APLU with our 1890 peers. Next slide, please. In the faculty arena, which is very important, we call us as faculty, the heartbeat of the institution, the intellectual core. We were able, from academic year '10 to '15, to increase the number of terminal degree faculty from 44% to 72%, and we've held study. While at the same time, right-sizing the faculty per the number of students in enrollment and head count, we reduced the number of faculty from 334 to 242 from fiscal year '10 to '19, while at the same time managing and holding our instructional costs flat. But incrementally, the president and the board approved for salary increases, with the latest being a robust 6%. But also, we were able to, as an institution, reach a 25% threshold of our peer comparators. And so we will look toward getting to the 50% and 75%, but to be really competitive, we need to get to the 100%. We need to be very competitive with our peers, because faculty now are a valuable resource, and everybody is recruiting and fighting for the same terminal degree faculty. Next slide. Now, just very briefly, we have invested in faculty development very intentionally. And some of that has led to some very excellent outcomes. One being an increase in STEM graduates in both colleges. We have a 12% increase overall in STEM graduates over the last 10 years. But at the undergraduate level, we had an 18% increase in STEM graduates. And we're very, very proud of that outcome. We've implemented a number of new STEM undergraduate and graduate academic programs, which are very difficult to get approved, because you have to have the infrastructure and faculty to do so. And we've expanded our academic enterprise of both distance and online programs. We have seven online programs that are current, and we're looking at 11 by the end of this academic year. And we've maintained our programmatic accreditations and our school accreditation with our recent winning of the AACSB accreditation for the School Business. Next slide, please. Ten years ago, we endeavored to reorganize our schools into colleges and rename them to colleges, which is appropriate vernacular for university and those divisions. And we reduced the number of departments by combining and collapsing from '25 to '16. We're currently revisiting that to make sure that with the changes, that they are consistent and able to work together and that there's compatibility in terms of our administrative approach. But right now, we have 16 departments, and we think they're functioning pretty well. Next slide. To do all this, one must have a core set of values. My core values are very clear. We're an 1890 institution. We're historically black college and university. We intend to maintain and sustain that cultural integrity. We're not going to change. We may change our approach and strategies in some areas, but we will serve our core constituents and client and maintain whatever our approved mission is. We will do that with a high degree of integrity. My perspective is that one must be authentically authentic at all times and accountable, with the focus being primarily on our students and student outcomes, teaching and learning and holistic student development. So that being said, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hope I didn't take too much time, and I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I do have the first question for you, and then the rest of our trustees will address you. You indicated you are from rural Georgia, a country boy. And one of the things common to us country folks is chicken. What is your preferred chicken at a fast-food restaurant? Is it Kentucky Fried? Is it Popeye? Is it churches or some other brand?
No, Mr. Chairman. You know that I have a strict diet. I only eat once a day. Maybe some fruit or something small in between. I really try to stay away from fried chicken. But actually, my preferred choice, if I do eat it, is the baked fried chicken at Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Thank you. Yeah, we better, I know you hope that other trustees find that their choice as well. For Dr. Williams.
Yes, Dr. Williams, thank you for applying for this very prestigious position. Thank you for all you have done, doing as the provost. Excellent, par excellence in that particular realm. I want to dive into this. I looked at your report. And by being close to the work, I've seen this similar, and it appears to be something that we see as trustees as an academic affairs report. It's strong in academics, but I am more interested, and follow me, I'm more interested in more of the expansion on a presidential, and I know you've never been a president, more of a presidential vision. Not what Hugh Ginni has done, but what is your vision? You know, give me a little bit, something more of a presidential expansion. That's the first piece. You talk about the re-imagine, the rebranding. And let me just be very frank with you. Presently, being trustees and being from North Alabama, we receive a lot of chatter, a lot of situations, articles, et cetera, about the conduct, about the morale, about you personally. So by being a president, if you are pushed to be a president, how will you rebrand yourself personally before you deal in rebranding the university? Because that affects all stakeholders. Okay? And there's an article that came out today that you may be aware of. But I just want you to be able to speak to that, to trustees, to give us full confidence and full knowledge that you're able to take that realm and to change the narrative and the branding piece of that. Again, I know you've been a provost. That's like going from middle school to high school. So let me hear, let me hear how you're going to step up to the big leagues and change this whole narrative.
Yeah, excellent question, kind of triple barrel, but we'll try to take it one at a time. Well, cannot divorce myself from the Eugenian administration, because I've been a part of it for the bulk of 11 or 12 years. And certainly, we've worked very closely together, and we're very proud of what we've accomplished. Yes, we do want to sustain some of the excellent initiatives and enterprises that the Eugenian administration has implemented, because they are good, they're solid. We've stabilized the institution. We've worked very hard to put programs in a progressive mode, both in terms of student outcomes, but also faculty credentialing. We'll not walk away from academics. Academics is the core of the institution. Sometimes we get into discussions where we allow the tail to wag the dog. We are here to prepare our students holistically, with the core of that being their academic preparation for either graduate, professional school, and/or employment. And it's the academic enterprise that prepares them, and we want there to be a healthy coalescence between the academic enterprise and student affairs, because I see students out of class 85% of the time and in class 15% of the time. And so, but we still need to have an academic environment, even in the student affairs arena, which means in the living and learning residence hall and other places where students tend to, as they say, hang out. But my vision is simple. I want more resources. And with more resources, we expand our footprint. Several of the things that we will endeavor to do will involve lobbying and friend-raising at the governmental agency level at Washington with senators and congresspeople. We'll work locally with our legislative delegation. We're already working to facilitate a better relationship with General Daley and his staff. We're looking at who will be the next four-star general at AMC and start working with them before they even get here. We're also working with some of the leaders at AMCOM and AMC to try to continue to enhance those relationships, and hopefully, they will evolve into more support from those agencies and those organizations. We have projects with NASA and some of the defense contractors and some collaborative contracts. And so we want to expand that footprint in those areas, because that will allow us to bring more resources into the institution that will help us to be able to join, appoint faculty and relieve some of the instructional stress that they are under. But at the same time, also award students graduate assistantships and associate ships, so we can get more graduate students into our doctoral and master's program and quickly move into research two status or R2 status. Secondly, we will endeavor to really focus on marketing the enterprise, marketing it locally, regionally, nationally, and globally. And we'll use all avenues, from professional public relations expert to social media. We will work very closely with those alumni who are in particular chapters. I mentioned yesterday, I would like to visit those cities in those chapters and caucus with them. We would like to have their support, because many of our alumni work in corporations or companies that match or have matching funds. Whatever they contribute, we want those matching funds. And also, they can get us into the room, into the doors of decision-makers at those corporations and companies. And if we can get into the room and start the process of friend-raising, we anticipate that we'll have more support. Beyond that, the key to institutional growth or institutional building is intellectual capabilities and capacities. We have to enhance our skill sets. We have to enhance our credentials. We have to recruit talented faculty, talented staff. And we have to build synergy and expertise core across the institution. That we can do. It takes time. It's going to take effort, and it's going to take resources. So if there is no fund or friend-raising, then it's difficult to build capacity. And so all those revenue streams, we will focus on to make sure we enhance and increase. Now, personally, you know, if you haven't done anything, you've got a lot of friends. When you make hard decisions, when you push people for accountability, when you push programmatically to have outcomes and put time, phase, agenda in place, when you have very clear objectives and require people to march in line and step with those objectives, sometimes they don't. They may differ, or they may even protest. And so oftentimes, you have disgruntled employees who say or do things out of retaliation or retribution. Then sometimes, when you make decisions or people don't get what they want, or sometimes they just don't like you, they will engage in personal attacks. And so for those personal attacks, we hold them baseless. We say that those allegations are untrue and unfounded. And I would hope that this board will look deeper introspectively at what is said and how it is said. We will respond appropriately at the appropriate time. And some of that will be via public relations, some of that may even be legally. But the issue is, people will tell lies and throw mud against the wall, and some of it will stick and some of it won't. But we have to be very appropriate in how we process it and make sure that we look for what the truth is. Thank you, sir.
Are you saying these allegations are not true? And we need this information to come to a consensus to get the best candidate. And so the question is, if there is a branding issue with, let's say, if you are selected, and there is this dark cloud, and it stays in the media, and we have a low giving in our alumni, and then we have this and we have that, how do you rebrand? How do you deal with that? And it's not just a public relations person that you hire. How do you personally? What do you do personally? Because the information that was given was very, very detailed. And things have been produced that detail affiliations, strong accusations, et cetera. And I'm not going to go into detail in this particular venue, but it's very serious. It's very serious.
Well, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Again, I said that the allegations are based on founded. I don't think they're detailed at all. Number two, it will take public relations expert and advice counsel for us to build a strategy to deal with that. But we will approach all of our public relations issues in that manner. I am not a public relations expert, so I would seek advice counsel on how to approach it strategically, even linguistically. But people make allegations, and allegations can be serious. But they are not serious if they're not true. If they're unfounded, it's just an allegation. And if there's a basis allegation, then I don't think that that should be the core of what our discussion about the vision for the next level should be. Thank you, sir.
Trustee Williams. Hi, Dr. Williams. Good to hear from you. Love your historical academic transformation of what you brought to the table the last 11 years. But I do think I hear a couple of things. If I'm hearing this correctly, you say basically you want to just continue status quo based on what Dr. Hugh Ginni and you have done. You feel like that that is the 21st century movement that we need. So if that's the case, if it sounds that way, and correct me if I'm wrong, I still want to understand that how do you, as a president, transform the culture and the character as a president to be able to represent the organization, to move it further than where it is? And are you saying, again, academics is going to get us there? And you said dollars, but I do want to make sure I understand, how are you going to impact that as the president? And the reason I'm asking that question is because I'm asking it about you as the president. What are you specifically going to do? Not the marketing, not all this. I want to know what the president's going to do based on his culture and based on his character to represent what, a little follow-up to what Chris Robison, trustee Robison said, because the 21st century, there's going to be status quo, or it's going to be moved. Go ahead.
Well, in higher education, we have associations. We have we're a member of larger organizations where we engage in a continual discussion about trends and futuristic outcomes for higher education. We also have lobbyist associations at the national level, the American Council on Education, Association of Public and Land Grant Universities, where I'm center and the core of some of those discussions. And the trends, of course, are heading in a particular direction or particular directions in all disciplines, but also institutional-wise. Institutions are, we are expanding our footprint in all arenas. And so me, as president, will focus immediately on certain initiatives. One will be increasing our board relations, because we need board support to engage in some of these endeavors. Alumni relations, I indicated previously, are very, very important. And our alumni are scattered throughout the globe, and many of them are in key positions in key corporations and government agencies. So I personally would need to contact them, have a relationship with them to develop and sustain their support. Reimaging and rebranding is somewhat of a new initiative that we have. And this whole Reimagine Campaign is very serious, because that will put us in a global perspective with a globalistic brand. And so I work very, very closely with all of our constituent groups that are working on that program and help to guide and direct. Primarily, initially, we have to develop a team. And that team at the cabinet level, but also at the sub-cabinet level and the academic administrative level, we have to have a team that's experienced, that have done this other places, have clear accomplishments and outcomes all across the board. One of the things that we will endeavor to continue, so as I said earlier, I won't divorce myself from this administration, because I'm a part of it. I'm a part of the successes of it. And so And so uh, we would like to continue to be uh, fiscally compliant and fiscally responsible, we would like to continue our level of accountability. We've admitted that we want to focus on customer service, but we also want to focus on employee skill set, employee development. The bottom line is a recruitment of talent into positions and holding them accountable with very clear outcomes. Uh, the other thing that I think uh, I would like to focus on a little bit more than what we've done now is our legislative support. Legislative support locally with our legislative delegation, elected officials, the mayor's office, the commissioners, the councilman. And then our uh, the uh, representatives in the House and the Senate in Montgomery, as well as the governor's office, I will personally. Be working with them to develop relationship so that we can garner more support for the institution. And then in Washington, uh, from the White House down, Congress, Senate, those senators and congresspeople who are HBCU graduates. Who understand our needs and our plight, uh, but also we have people in the White House who are HBCU graduates that we are communicating with and connected to. And so those are the things that we will focus on from a presidential level, but uh, being an example. Uh, being a very clear uh, mentor to students, being an example for faculty and staff. Comporting myself appropriately, uh, being where we need to be, doing what we need to do all the time. Appropriately attired and 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 hopefully polished and well spoken and representing and speaking our special truth. Uh, that will be my mission and that will be, those will be my uh. Strategems to to expand our footprint. Now internally, we're moving into artificial intelligence, we're moving into cybersecurity, we have four plus one programs, we. Are moving to innovate and create uh, more student activities, so our students will have. Uh, more fun, as they like to say, but also more synergy and a closer relationship with institutions where they're wedded to and hopefully they'll want to be here. And that will increase our retention and persistence. Uh, we have a a program that we will continue to invest in and and enhance and expand. Which will focus on retention and persistence and we have a excellent career development. Uh, office that we will continue to invest in because every student that leaves should have a job and have an opportunity, whether it be professional. Or whether it be graduate school or professional school. And so those are are some of the things that we would like to focus on as president.
Right, and uh, Dr. Williams, I I I think basically what you're saying is you're you're putting a lot of trust into reimagine. And maybe the president doesn't play a major role from a culture or character perspective. To pull off the twenty first century alignment with money, with fundraising, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 it's not what I'm saying, I'm saying that I as president build a team and hold that team accountable.
Okay.
And work with them on a daily basis to make sure that we have clear goals and objectives aligning with our strategic plan and the board approved master plan. So that we stay on track to where we are trying to go for the next decade.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go ahead and ask a question, um, uh. Uh, Dr. Williams, uh, trustee Ganey here, uh, you know, as a former alum and. Um, your efforts in action as a provost has been extremely impressive. One of the things I have, I have, you know, two questions, one is as a. As a provost, you typically in the shadows of the president and you're not uh, able to be that public face and. But yet the the programs that have been implemented have really cast, uh, you know, propelled the institution forward. Um, since I've been there, how do you? How do you, tell us, how would you come from behind the shadows of not being a public figure? Uh, be the face for the institution uh, to move us forward um, in a critical time?
Well, very simply, um. I do enjoy lecturing. Uh, 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 I'm a professor, we we are trained to speak for either fifty five minute blocks or. Two and a half minute, two and a half hour blocks, depending on whether it's undergraduate, graduate course and when it's taught. Um, I will be out among our alums, among our constituents and and accepting every speaking engagement that we're invited. To participate in, I personally will recruit superstar students uh, in their homes uh, or at coffee houses, wherever. We can meet, we will put together an apparatus where um, we have students in caucuses in various cities. And we meet with them and their parents and convince them that Alabama A and M should be their fourth first choice and this is where they ought to be. Uh, we will strategically develop a a three year calendar initially. Uh, and of course, some of that is dependent upon what meetings we must attend and then all of the other activities. But around those activities, uh, we already have some things that are planned three years out. Uh, we intend to uh, engage in community relations in those cities and those those counties um. Throughout Alabama and and to continue our bus tour and maybe even expand on it, we may take it to two weeks and try to. Uh, touch more high schools, but more importantly, more communities. Uh, as part of one institution where we sent teams in two cities where we were playing classics uh, prior to the actual event. And those teams would scour throughout the city, uh, meet with high schools, meet with community leaders and just garner support for the institution. At the same time, uh, engaging in a public relations blitz uh, that was media based and now will be media based and social media based. Uh, so bottom line is, uh, I I'm not big on promoting myself, I'm bigger on promoting the institution. And I would love to put our excellent faculty, our excellent staff and students out front. But I want to be the one to help plan and to guide and direct and do it intentionally and deliberately and strategically.
Okay, very good, um, next question is about innovation, um, uh, being on A and M and it's. And we're moving into a a whole um, direction. And so one of the questions I have asked, I asked people, you know, tell us about an encouraging higher education innovation. That you are aware of, and I think Alabama A and M is one of those higher education, so tell me, um. You know, what is it about Alabama A and M on an innovation that you have been a part of? And what value uh, has it brought to our institution? And what do you think you will do as a president carrying it forward if if selected as a president?
Well, most of the innovative approaches and initiatives for me have been in the academic and or research space, of course. Uh, I've had the opportunity to assist and support the institution by leading. Uh, searches and athletics, uh, you know, of course, helping to make sure that we are are compliant and accountable. In the way that we spend our money is, as you know, a large uh, percentage of the finances come through academic affairs and research, uh. Research, of course, is restricted money, academic affair salary and wages, programmatic development and the like. But um, one of the innovative things that we think we're doing is we are deliberately and intentionally building our contracting arm of the university. And as we build out that arm, uh, we intend for that arm to be an integral part of us to be able to hire cutting edge faculty. For artificial intelligence, for cybersecurity, for bio, everything, biochemistry, bio uh, medicine, whatever. And and that will allow us to also expand our academic enterprise, so I will drive that. As president, but we also need some new facilities for some of that, we need new wing for the engineering building for research and some of the innovative programs. Uh, we need new faculty in biochemistry, if we're gonna go in a direction for bioengineering. And biomedical engineering, we'll need additional faculty and additional resources, but also partnerships, all of this we can't do out by ourselves, we're gonna have to partner. Neighboring and sister institutions uh, to to help us to build that capacity, but also local. Uh, enterprise, for example, we have a a new partnership with Hospital that is really expanded via the pandemic. And so Toyota was uh, local and and center and a part of that as well. And so we'll push those partnerships from the president's office and establish those relationships, sustain and maintain those relationships. And that will be a primary focus of ours, but beyond that, uh, also innovative is the way that we recruit and retain faculty. We've been able to do some very creative things to bring some faculty. And in the process, we were able to credential our school of business. And win the esteemed and prestigious AACSB accreditation. And that took some major innovations, some major funding and and recruitment of faculty with uh, specific. Credentials that will render us compliant and able to gain that initial affirmation.
Okay, well, that's my questions, thank you, Dr. Lam, I just wanted to really expand on where we are from an academic standpoint as an institution. Um, and you know, where that takes us if you become the president, so, thank you.
Dr. Williams, this is trustee Hackett, how you doing this afternoon, sir?
Yeah.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for the interest you are showing in Alabama A and M University. President, president serving as provo and vice president for academic affairs and research at the university. And I'm certain you understand their importance of a strong financial picture. Alabama A and M has for many years struggled financially due to many issues. One being inadequate funding from the state of Alabama. However, over the years with increasing enrollment, increased state funding, federal grants, capital fund drives. Increased alumni given and other funding sources, the university now is financially sovereign. What steps will you take to make sure certainly the university remain financially sovereign?
It's very clearly, uh, fiscal affairs does not report to me here, but it has reported to me in a previous position. And in that position, we were essentially uh, required to go through forensic audit every year, that means every expenditure tool. And be uh, is uh, accountable down to the last penny. And so uh, some of the financial steps that I would take to make sure that we accountable at that level is first, we have to have a very competent. Uh, fiscal affairs director, in our case is vice president of fiscal affairs. And that office has to be adequately staffed and then we need a very competent controller. Uh, and that office will review each and every expenditure tool. Uh, but also coalesce with the budget office, we have a budget office that's that I think is very well staffed and very competent at this time. So we'll want to maintain the level of competency, the level, the skill sets, the credentials in those office, but make sure. That we trust but verify, which means we have to check. And we have to work very closely with the state examiners, uh, sometimes you find yourself in a in a adversary position to the state examiners. But you really need to be in a cooperative relationship with the state examiners as best you can. And so uh, we will maintain our financial controls, um, we have to make sure that we reconcile our statements in a timely fashion. We have to make sure that all of our disbursement is made in timely fashion and we have to pay the bills, that means invoices have to be cut, purchase orders and the like. And so uh, we must have a team that is very clear on what the responsibilities are. And what their uh, area is responsible for, because all of them are responsible for different areas, we even have contract and grant accounting. And and we have to ensure that we draw down appropriately, else the institution will find itself leveraging its own funds. And not uh, garnering the funds back from Washington. And so that's very important that we have a a strategic and continuous drawdown approach, uh, because many of our funds are federal. Uh, in some instances, in some years, some of our institutions get more federal funds than state funds. Also, to maintain a strong financial position, we have to ensure that we don't. Have high student receivables, we have to make sure that we recruit some students that can contribute to their educational enterprise, but we also have to raise funds. To help with need based aid and both of those approaches hopefully will continue to render us uh, fiscally sovereign.
Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Williams, for your response. And uh, that's complete my question and see it through.
I will, um, I have a question, Dr. Williams, this is Austin Smith, SGA president.
How you doing?
Austin. I'm doing well, um, so my question is, um, well, let's start off with, Dr. Williams, I, the, I have been A and M for a long time, I have never. Met you until now, unfortunately, we have our paths have not crossed. So my question is, how will you make yourself accessible to ordinary students additionally? How will you garner support of students, alumni, staff and faculty so that you can get the work done for the university?
Uh. First, let me deal with accessible to students, uh, sometimes I am a. A judge executioner and jury for student issues, so we have to be kind of careful in the space that I sit now. But as president, I will be out and among the students, uh, you just have a notice, I'm at many of your events. Uh, and I I like to look and watch you guys have the fun that you have. Uh, as you know, I love athletics and so I attend all the athletic events and support them and respond to whatever request that they may have. Because they have many requests in trying to uh, recruit and bring in students, particularly uh, transfer students. But uh, being accessible to students, open to policy, uh, being at your events, uh, visiting you in your space. Uh, I like caucusing with students and talking and debating and pushing and challenging them and some of that can be done in living learning spaces, some of it can be done in the honors. Uh, the honors facility that we have and and in the various academic programs. Uh, we will work very hard to not only just pull this with you, but be an example. And to try to challenge students to understand that they're here to become professionals. While we want you to have fun, we also want you to be holistically developed and prepared to be contributing citizens in the larger world. Uh, with alumni, we will have to go and meet them in their space, uh, some of that, of course, we can't do in a pandemic, it would have to be done electronically. But it will be my intention to travel and to visit as many alumni chapters as possible. To meet and to discuss and caucus with them, some of them have very serious concerns, some of it is historically. Is historical, uh, they always want to remind you of what was in their day. And so we have to discuss what our plans and what our decisions are to say, well, why we are looking at it from a different vantage point. How we're trying to be more current and more today for our students. How we communicate with our students is different from forty years ago. And so uh, we'll have a presence on social media, uh, we we will have to engage uh, students on social media, many of our communications will be sent out via social media. And we'll respond to those concerns and issues that they have, but bottom line is the personal touch. Being in their space, both constituents, both alums and students. And with faculty, well, we have a working relationship with the faculty center and we will continue that relationship. And we meet with the colleges and the departments uh, on a periodic basis. But uh, that's something that uh, we will continue, but we will focus more on our relationship with alumni and with students.
And I have a follow up to that as well, um, the follow up is. Uh, how will the Williams presidency differ from the Hugueny presidency?
You know, you're put in a very precarious position because uh, some of this could be taken as a criticism of the Hugueny presidency and I'm not in that mode. Um, absolutely love uh, what we've done, um, but the difference is maybe um. I like traveling a little more sometimes than the current president and I don't mind talking to politicians, I like being in their space, I like being. Walking the halls of the senate and the congress, I like working and talking with their staffs. Uh, the challenge for me is they don't want to talk to necessarily provosts, they like talking to presidents of board chairs. And so I will be in their face and in their space, um, I like caucusing, I like uh, making the ask. I like, uh, making the ask. And so I'll be at people's table and in people's living room, making those ask. And so I think that's one way that it would differ. Um, I also, uh, love to recruit talent externally. Uh, the president, uh, he likes to develop talent internally. I like to do a little bit of both. So I'll be looking across the country to bring in talent in fiscal affairs and student affairs and academic affairs. Uh, even athletics. And so we'll be looking to enhance our talent, our credentials, credibility across the board. And all arenas of higher education at this institution.
Robinson with another question. Your first hundred days, um, if, if chosen to be the president. Uh, keep it in mind, let's say hypothetically, uh, you, you get chosen, um, a- as an ex-president. Uh, day number three, we're, we're hit with, um, three, four potential lawsuits. How do you navigate through that? And what happens in those first, let's, I'm gonna give you ninety days. What, what's going to happen in those ninety days? Because you're gonna have to galvanize the troops. Get your staff together, get yourself together personally, get the alumni together, build the confidence of the students. You know, what, what are you as, you know, would be President Williams, how are you gonna deal with that?
Well, as you know, when I tenure here, we've had a myriad of, of suits for various reasons. And I don't know that what you mentioned would be my approach. My approach would be to work very closely with our internal counsel. Uh, work very closely with the board council and where need to be to work and coalesce with the external council. And I would let them drive the strategy as to how we respond to lawsuits. Uh, we have a lot of experience in that area. We know what to do and what to say and what not to do and what not to say. I've probably done more depositions than most provosts in the country because I am the longest service continuous, longest continuous serving provost. In HBCU community and one of the longest service and serving in the country, which means that I've dealt with a lot of tenure cases. Dealt with a lot of personnel cases and, and this is a very litigious state. And we have a pseudo-union that represents many of the clients. And so it's very easy for them to file a lawsuit and put us on the defensive, but we have a lot of experience in dealing with those lawsuits. And we will not endeavor to guide and direct ourselves. We will work very closely with our internal counsel, the board counsel and our external counsel where need be. To develop a strategy to respond and to fight those cases.
So, so you wouldn't have a problem being deposed or under oath? If, 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 if the board said, hey, let's, let's get an outside consultant to investigate further, you know, before we confirm the, the twelfth president. You would be willing to do that?
I'm al- always willing to, uh, offer what is factual. Uh, but again, I would have to seek the advice and counsel of counsel.
You know, trustee, uh, Robinson, uh, just a follow-up, Dr. Williams, I think that's an interesting question. I just want to make sure we all understand. And you, you, you obviously know this because you got tenure, you got history, you understand suits, things like that. We, we have a major decision and we enter in today with a major article that puts us into a scandal. And no matter what we do, we still have to deal with it. We have to address it. We have to know as trustees, we've done our due diligence. Uh, so we gotta walk away making sure that, uh, you give us some clear concise that you says baseless. And there's nothing to it and he's just came out and they're just attacking. Obviously, it's very strategic on the people that are coming to the table. Uh, because it will impact everything we just talked about. Every decision, every donor, every reimagine, everything that they see on a website. Everything that they attract themselves to. So it's just important you give us, you know, some and, and I think you said you've done that. Uh, but that's the reason why I think Mr. Trustee Robinson is asking, because these things are just flowing and coming and coming. So it's important that we just have some clear concise direction.
Absolutely, sir. Uh, we've responded and I think given that it is a legal issue and a human relations. Uh, issue that, uh, we should leave the responses I indicated previously.
Dr. Williams, I li- I'd like to make, uh, I ha- I have a question. What I would like to do, what I would like to do at this point is let's talk about. Your strengths and how, uh, your tenure there at A and M has prepared you. To become the next president if selected. Uh, I want to move and continue to focus on facts. I want to continue to, to focus on vision and direction and, and, and not allegations. Okay? So if you could, if you could, talk a little bit about, uh, what, what has prepared you. Let's talk about what, uh. Strengths that you have, uh, you know, as serving as the current provost that would make you, uh, uh, prepared to be the next president. Thank you.
Well, that's a very important question and probably more germane to the discussion than, than anything else. Because I was sent to graduate school by a college president. And, uh, that was my first example. Um, not necessarily a mentor per se, but an example from afar as a student. And then my mentor became President of Marsh Brown College, uh, later on. But those two gentlemen, uh, sent me to Ohio State and then at Maryland. Uh, one of them served on my dissertation committee. Then from there, I went to Southern University and I saw Dr. Delores Spikes, uh, and the way that she carried and supported herself. I was very impressed. Uh, I didn't aspire to be a college president. I was an agriculture guy. And being in agriculture, we focus on community development. We focus on research centers and instruction. The triacle of agriculture, of extension, research and instruction. And I thought that that is where my career would be. Uh, but then I met, uh, Clint Bristow, which, uh, interestingly became president of Alcorn State. But the way that he carried himself and, and he was very aggressive in recruitment. So he recruited me to work at Alcorn in administrative capacity, even though I was very, very young and inexperienced. And so I've kind of followed his example. Uh, but then I thought, you know, Alcorn was, was not, uh, at that time. Uh, looking to aggressively expand whereas FAMU was exploding. And so, uh, met Dr. Adams and Dr. Humphries. Uh, along with my dean, former dean at Southern, uh, Bobby Fields. And so they asked me, look, we gotta save these agriculture programs. You're young and aggressive. Come recruit and build. And so I was able to go there, recruit and build. But more importantly, I was able to see the culture of how FAMU went from four thousand students. To thirteen thousand. How they went from being called a diploma meal. To recruiting more national merit scholars than any other institution. So part of that apparatus I have because I was involved and I watched and I studied. And, and, uh, we were able to take some of that and then implemented at Fort Val if when we went there. We doubled the enrollment in, in twenty-four months and I left, we were right at four thousand students. Um, and so all of those examples are, are examples strategically of initiatives. That we would want to duplicate, in some cases tweak, uh, improve, make current. But that's part of my vision. Part of my vision also comes out of, of reading and studying. Uh, I've read everything Benjamin Mays wrote and looked at all of his examples. Uh, Mordecai Johnson is one of our examples, the first African-American president of Howard University, who was able to transform that institution. Uh, Benjamin Mays was dean at Howard and went to Morehouse. And at Morehouse, um, the institution was about to go into financial bankruptcy. And he saved it and it has become the Morehouse that it is today. Uh, working on the Dr. Humphries, who was very eclectic. Uh, and he provided us a lot of examples of innovative and creative ways to recruit students and build programs. And some of those are things that I implement. And then working on the Dr. Huguenot. Uh, Dr. Huguenot is a southern gentleman. He's very appropriate. Uh, he's extremely articulate. Uh, and he tries to do the right thing, not just at the right time, but all times. And so that's the example that we will follow and that has helped build me and shape me into what I think I am today.
Dr. Mims, uh, this is trustee Crumpleton.
Hello, trustee.
I just want to make a comment about the current situation. In our business, we can be kind of hu- high-profile because we're involved with developments and. Things that people sometimes read about in the newspaper. And over the years, we've been victims of, of misprints. And, uh, people sensationalizing, uh, the, the reporters will do that. So we actually refuse to take an interview with a newspaper on anything we're doing. But we do request that they give us a list of all the questions that they have and we will answer every one of them. And we have our marketing people, uh, write those answers. And we say, this is what you are authorized to publish. And that way, if there's ever a question about it, uh, we can say, no. Th- this is what we told you, you could publish. This is the correct information. And newspapers are trying to sell papers because that's how they make money. So they, they will try to twist things to sensationalize a situation. And we're talking about, um, an allegation that I've read every word that has been sent to me so far. And every outside person that has looked at this thing has concluded that there's no basis for anything, period. And, and I have taken the time to carefully go through that, especially because I've been in the same situations. With regard to developments or things that we're doing where they get mischaracterized. And they want to say that there's some scandal associated with what you're building or you've gotten some kind of, uh, uh. Serendipitous, uh, reward you shouldn't have been entitled to or something like, you just make up all kinds of crazy stuff. So I just want to say that and share that with the board that this is how some of that happens and I know that firsthand. I also want to add that I'm an ex-officio with the RISE program at Alabama A and M. And I'm, I'm very proud to be associated with that group. I started out being on the advisory panel and, and Dr. Williams explained to me that as soon as I became a board member. That there would be a conflict of interest and that I would have to step aside, but I could still be there and attend as an ex-officio. I just couldn't vote. And I leaped at the opportunity to do that and I continue to attend those meetings. I did just miss my first meeting. First missed meeting was yesterday because there was too much going on. But in the course of those meetings, everyone needs to know what a valuable resource Dr. Williams has been. For that organization, which is trying to develop opportunities for entrepreneurial development of new businesses for students. Uh, and faculty at the university, for us to be able to create sustainable income for the university. These are things that, that are just quietly being put in place, but they, they create substantial improvement and, and benefits for the university. And with that, I'll, I'll kind of shut up, but I just, I wanted to step in and just add those comments.
Well, thank you, trustee Crumpleton. You know, we've been here eleven and a half.
And I want to do likewise. Did you, you got that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we've been eleven and a half years. And so in my commentary, I don't want to make light of that. Didn't know we would have to address it publicly as such, that this may be, uh, better discussed in a different venue. But the issue is, is that, uh, we've had articles written, we've had blogs written, there's stuff all over social media. And, uh, this is part of course nowadays. And so you have to be able to, as trustee Robinson asked us, to be able to respond. And strategically do so. Uh, but, um, not to make light of it, but an allegation is an allegation. And so, thank you, sir.
I wanted to also say, um, that. I have been here a number of years at the university. I can't think of the time in which we had a transition. Of the presidency where we didn't have. Uh, some kind of disruption. Purpose of this session to talk about that. Uh, but to hear from you, as we've heard from the other candidates, about what their vision is for the university, what they have done. And I echo what, uh, trustee Gani said, that, uh, we have seen, uh, the results of your work. As the provost and the academic vice president, uh, and of the person of the research. And we've seen how that has propelled Alabama A and M to the level where it is now, to the recognition. That we're getting now and to the important things. And as I hear people talk about how being involved in the community and getting money. People don't just throw money at anything. They do it at programs. They give money to programs. And you have put those and build and strengthen those programs at Alabama A and M where people will. And you have been able to attract very competent faculty. And these faculty members are working in the community. We've got a list and we can go on and on. I'm involved in several things. So the faculty at Alabama A and M, like you say, we are, just like we say, the students are, uh, the best, the faculty and staff are. And we're involved in so many things in the community. It's not like the community is out there and we're not doing anything. We're doing a lot of things. And so I just want to commend you, uh, as you have worked with the president and, and make, and allowing us to become more involved. In, in a like, uh, trustee Gani said, who was a former student of mine. I'm proud of her. But she has said, you know, we've looked at the programs that I, you know, and they are being lauded all over the country. We have the best STEM programs, the best engineering programs. We have accredited business program. We have programs in engineering. I'm sitting.
Well, Dr. Jones, if, if, if you, as you are frozen, I think one of the things based upon the questions that came from trustee Williams is. I'm not necessarily totally in favor of leadership personality driving the institution. I want foundation of credential credible faculty and staff and excellent students to be the driver. Because it's the student outcomes and our faculty outcomes that will determine, as you said, the footprint. And, and the type of public relations that we enjoy. Uh, the personality of the president is important. I want to be involved and engaged, but I want to be a driver and a pusher, uh, versus just a pitcher.
Hi, Dr. Williams.
Hello, trustee Banks. How are you? Pat Banks Pickett.
Okay, and, um, I asked the same question to the other candidates, but yours is a little differently. I'll ask it a little differently because they were, they would be new to Alabama. You are here and have been here for a while, but you kind of touched on it already. So it's only if you want to expound on it. But, um, being that you are here in Alabama, um, what would be your plan to, um, influence the figures in Montgomery? And you, you know that we have to deal with, um, other institutions, larger institutions like the Auburns in Alabama. How would you tackle that? You kind of talked about it. And then the next question would be about fundraising. We talk a lot about donors and those are those one-time givers. And we really, and we appreciate them. Please don't think we don't appreciate those people. But, um, we want to build more partnerships with agencies in the Huntsville area. And, and in, you know, farther out, but we want to make sure that we have a president who's able to do those things. So could you kind of talk about that?
Well, a couple of things, yes, some of we've already addressed. I don't want to start, uh, calling names. Uh, but there are certain legislators who carry a lot more influence than others. Uh, of course, our base is, um, in, in our area, we have, uh, representative that's a member of the, the Democratic and Black Caucus. And so we, we have to have her support. We also have the minority leader in Huntsville. We have to have his support. But in this area, we also have the person who's responsible for legislative budget, uh, in the senate. And so we'll be working with that person very closely, uh, and establishing a good relationship with him, uh, as best we can. Uh, secondly is that we have to have people in Montgomery, uh, before, during and sometimes after the session. And so we're gonna have to have competent, uh, informational specialist, uh, some call them lobbyists. Who are sharing information about what we want, what our vision is, what our needs are. We have some very inherent needs. Here, uh, particularly in areas of major renovations and repair in historic district. And so we, we will work, uh, very closely, uh, with our government relations arm. And, uh, employ, uh, information specialist or lobbyist, uh, for Montgomery. The same thing for Washington. And you have to have people who will focus on both sides of the aisle. Uh, you'd never, w- we don't know what to. You'd never, we don't know what the projection is going to be in the House or Senate, or which way it's going to flip in the midterm elections. But either way, it won't be a huge flip. And so you need some influence and some people working on both sides. And so that's one, one of our objectives will be to work with a firm or set of firms to help us. And some of that, we've already started working on with our relationship with Mississippi State, a developing relationship with Clemson. We're also looking at a relationship now, another, a new relationship with Georgia Tech. And and we hope to to first piggyback and tag along with their efforts in the contracting and grant space, but in the overall discretionary money for that space, we will be directly working with lobby firms in both Montgomery and in Washington DC. Now, that sustained fundraising is something that we, of course, have talked about in reimagining and rebranding and reimagine. People, when they feel good, they give to programs, as Dr. Jones said, but they also give to people, meaning people in those programs. We've had some some success in athletics recently. They're proud of them. And we anticipate that people, if we're able to sustain that success, are willing to invest and promote. And we need that now in this new arena of name and image and likeness, and students being able to receive monetary benefits for sponsorships. And so we need a strategic plan as to how we're going to do that, because we don't have the resources of some of the alums of the Alabama, the Ohio States, or Stanford. And so that sustained giving comes with sustained success. A lot of times, people don't like to invest in a vision, but they will invest in sustained success. And so we think that we've had some sustained academic success. We are beginning to again have athletic success. And so these are things that would be central and core in our marketing and public relation initiatives to encourage and prod people to come to the table and give in a very significant way. We've got a large percentage of people that are giving, we just need more and larger amounts. And we haven't had the large thirty million dollar gift, which would change the game in terms of student scholarships in the foundation, because that will render a larger percentage of interest income for us to use in scholarships. And so we will endeavor to work with the foundations, with those philanthropists that are giving and have given. But we've got to bust their door down. We've got to force ourselves in their space. And so that's part of our whole new reimagining and rebranding campaign and our plan. And our faculty have done an excellent job in telling us what they need and what they want. They have some very creative and innovative ideas in STEM, in non-STEM, in the arts and humanities and the social sciences, for research centers, for outreach and technical assistance centers, for economic development enterprises, and in the STEM areas for both facilities and cutting-edge research and and academic endeavors. And we need resources, so for what we'd like to do, we have no choice but to go and friend and fundraise in all of these arenas, but particularly in Montgomery and Washington.
Dr. Wims, Trustee Harper here, want to echo, hey, want to echo Trustee Ganey, and and thank you for your commitment to the university and all the good work that you've done over the years, furthering our mission. My question comes, and you've talked a little bit about some of the challenges being more forward-facing, and you know, your role hasn't required that, so that'll be a little bit of a of a transition or an adjustment. But with any organization, whether it be corporate or nonprofit, there's always challenges associated with rise from within, right? They can be, you know, a number of things, of delegating things that you normally once did and taking that off your plate. But what do you foresee if you were selected as the next university president? That would be your biggest challenge? And and what do you, because I'm sure you felt that out, what in your mind would you do to address and overcome that?
Well, I think my biggest challenge in the seat would be to develop a competent, capable team and having the resources to recruit the best and brightest. I I always say intellectualism has to be the driver, experience has to be the foundation. We need both, need people who are smart, but also who have the experience in these various areas, so they don't come to the table with a blank sheet of paper, meaning that they have done it, and they've done it more than once several places, so they have experiences that they bring to the table that we can compare and contrast. That will be the biggest challenge initially, developing, particularly in this pandemic space. People who are good and are settled are less likely to want to move right now. So that's that's one of our biggest challenges. But from an infrastructure institutional perspective, our challenge remains the challenge that we've had for two or three decades, and that is dealing with our facilities in the historic district. What is our answer and response as to how we will deal with the council training building? What will we do relative to Hillcrest? And a lot of this is not my decision, it's our decision. So getting all of us to the table to discuss the best approach and how we will finance these initiatives, how we will pay for renovations and repairs, what are the best utilization for these facilities? And that will determine the architectural approach. That, from an institutional perspective, I see as our major challenge right now. We have a number of academic and support buildings from Elmore Gym on on the bottom end, all the way up to Hillcrest on the top end, that we must address and continue to address. Dr. Eugeni and and his facility staff have done a wonderful job with the resources we have, but we've got to continue to make improvements. Third challenge, I think, is that I I believe we need some new facilities, both on the academic side and on the living and learning residential side. I'd like to see a new living, learning residence apartment style, and finding that students are less likely to want to live in a traditional dormitory. While we maintain our traditional dormitory, we need a public-private partnership to develop and build some of these alternative living arrangements. And some of our academic areas need new academic space. We just did a great job in renovating McKenna for English and some of our humanities faculty. But we need a new science building for chemistry and and physics and biology. And all of our students take general ed courses in those areas. And then we have faculty attempting to do research and instruction at the upper division and the graduate level. And they need a new cutting-edge facility. That facility is dated, and it needs to be renovated and repurposed. And so those are the two or three major challenges that I see that are immediate going forward.
Dr. Wims, I know you're a student of history, especially a student of education in our arena. But where are we in downstream from the debate between W. B. Du Bois and Booker T. Washington that occurred in Atlanta? Where are we in that spectrum? What is your philosophy as far as which of those arguments that were made at that time most represent your philosophy and the trajectory of Alabama A and M University?
Well, I have to be honest, Trustee Williams. I have not studied it from a conflictual perspective, because much of that was political, as you know. They were wrestling for control of the Republican Party at that time. And the Harvard graduates, to include Du Bois, Marvin O'Troda, and others, were adversarial to Mr. Washington. And Mr. Washington and Otto B. Will Barnett and others were very core, because they had in in the Republican Party, influencing election outcomes, because they had more resources than you had the trusty machine. But Du Bois was more literal. He was, of course, a doctoral graduate of Harvard and have written some of the seminal pieces that have guided us in terms of intellectual development, particularly in the social sciences. And so I'm kind of a combination of the two. I'm a Carverite from undergrad, being an agronomy major, and following his track to actually work in that arena as to what Carver did, being from that area and having spent a lot of time on the campus as a child. But it is a Du Bois, and those of us who are surrogates of Du Bois and the social sciences, understanding that we have to impact holistic student development, both intellectually as well as vocationally, in order to to reach some economic stability and economic development within community, but also intellectual development within our institutions. And so the argument, I don't see it as being an argument from my vantage point. I think we need some of both. We need the agricultural and the mechanical, but we also must invest in our holistic student development and have students who are truly interested in the arts and humanities and and the languages, that they have the opportunity to pursue their dreams. The intellectual and philosophical foundation of how a person behaves, what becomes their priorities and commitments, is very important. And that's a part of the intellectual and holistic development of a human being in their collegiate and graduate school years. And so the 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 foundation set by Du Bois and those who are scholars who followed him, that we read and study, they allow us to engage in higher-order thinking. And that higher-order thinking is played out, sometimes in legislations, played out in how we approach government and legal decisions. What's our perspective on how we develop community, how we develop schools, how we develop social and spiritual organizations? And so both of them are very important. I lean both ways. So I don't want to say that I choose one over the other. I actually like both. And I think at the end of Dr. Du Bois's life, when he went to Ghana, he was able to see what Mr. Washington, but also what Marcus Garvey was trying and attempting to do.
Can I have one more question, Pro Tim?
Yes, but try to keep it in the ramps of where we're discussing. End of discussion is arena that where you were early when we done executive session.
Yeah, I'm not talking about Du Bois or nobody like that, I'm talking about the president. And what do you plan to do if you're elected president to further the mental health, substance abuse? You know, Dr. Crosby, when he was here, he was under my committee with Student Affairs, and he partnered, collaborated with you on this Alabama consortium. So are you still on board with that and and keeping that? Because the number one thing right now with our students, post-COVID, in-COVID, period, is is mental health and substance abuse. And we have some students that hate to go home for the summer, because they got to deal with those issues. And they hate to even come here to deal with some other issues. And that's going to be the biggest driving force is for student welfare and 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 being mentally capable to cope.
Yes, sir, that's a very excellent question. And I must say that many institutions are very small institutions, that is, are very careful about treading in that water because of some of the risk and liability issues that are inherent in dealing with those special populations. We are a little different. We we already have some risk, what I call risk liability challenges, populations on our campus. We have a a preschool where young folk are on our campus. We have a Bulldog Life program, but we're dealing with constituents that have some very special challenges that most institutions would not bring those people on the campus. We also have a Communicative Sciences and Disorders clinicals, where we addressed and cared for people with with certain types of challenges. And so we're already in that space on the academic side and our social work and psychology program. We are working and are prepared to deal with on a larger, on a larger platform, people with those types of challenges, because that's where social work is going. That's where counseling and psychology is going, because the populations are becoming so large. And if you know, also in Huntsville, we have one of the largest percentage of people who've been diagnosed as being autistic. And so all of those areas, our academics are looking to how we develop centers, how do we expand our programs? We already have some programmatic offering, and we're dealing with that from a technical assistance and extension perspective. But we don't have centers through which money can be financed, and we can hire people to focus on that from a treatment perspective. But yes, we we stand ready. That's a part of our visioning, when we vision what we would like to see. Some of those are already included in that visioning process. So the short answer is yes, the long answer is less it.
Dr. Wims, I got, I was trying to make sure when nobody else is going to jump in before me. Just curious, being that you are the candidate who's already on campus, and you'll be transitioning from one area to another area, can you tell me how you view that in terms of a strength or some strengths and as well as weaknesses? Because I know you already have relationships with people on campus, and you'll kind of be shifting. So do you see you're being present already as a strength or as a weakness? Or do you see, where do you fall in line on that? And how do you plan to kind of maneuver that transition from one role to another if selected?
That's a good question. One, I'll go back to what I said earlier. I've been kind of prepared for this role for a long time. I thought I was ready twelve, thirteen years ago. But I made some mistakes in limiting myself as to where I would work. I limited myself to eighteen ninety institutions within a confined series of states. You cannot do that at a presidential level. People say, well, he want to be president. Well, if I want to be president, I could have been president a long time ago. I could go to Nevada or Michigan or Washington State or Minnesota. Could have been president a long time ago. That's not the object. The objective was to remain in the land-grant tradition, and I've been prepared to do so. A lot of people invested in me, a lot of institutions invested in me. And so I owe them a debt, and that debt is to serve and serve with credibility. The transition for me will will be a lot easier than most, because I I think we've got a very good team in my area. And that area, we feel, is 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 totally compliant when it comes to SACC CLC, which we have a report due in twenty-three. So you have to be careful how you transition, you're already in the cycle. And so when you transition and you upset the apricot, you can find yourself missing or skipping or being scant in some areas. But most of the the standards and requirements are relative to academic affairs and or research. And so we just completed our fifth-year interim, and we came out in very good shape. I'm serving right now as chair of two schools' reviews. I can't mention those schools, but they are traditionally white schools. And so I'm working very hard with SACC CLC. And and I just, in looking at all of the compliance standards, the way that we somewhat manage is to try to stay in compliance and develop a culture of compliance across the campus, so that when it comes time, you don't have to jump and try to run and get in compliance. And so we'll maintain that stratagem and that approach. I don't see any issues with me transitioning. We will do national searches for provosts and for, we've already got some national searches ongoing for deans, a couple of deans, and so we'll maintain those. But I don't see any problem with the transition. I see it as a strength of me being on campus, being familiar with our programs, being familiar with all of our areas across the campus and all of the divisions, and familiar with the personnel and having worked with this cabinet and its members, knowing their strengths and weaknesses. So I think it is a definite strength for us to look internal, to see if we have someone who has the capability. And if not, then then you go external, so.
Thank you.
We're about out of time. Are there any further questions to Provost Wims?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. Got some questions that I was not expecting, so I had to kind of come off the cuff. But it has been an enjoyable experience. It definitely has been a grueling search process. We did, I think, four interviews yesterday and then one today. It's very seldom that we get to share ideas on higher education and what we think are important. I always want to remind people that the core of what we do is student development and academic program. I always want to remind people that the core of what we do is student development and academic programs are at the core of that. And so, but the president is is in control of him or herself and has to be very attuned to the needs of all areas. Because I always say students outside of class eighty-five percent of the time, in class about fifteen percent of the time. And if we don't focus on that eighty-five percent of the time, then the development in that eighty-five percent won't help the outcome that we're looking for when they graduate, complete, and they'll go into employment or professional school or graduate school. So our student affairs, it's very key. Athletic enterprise is very important. Some of our people call it the front porch. And so we want to make sure that our front porch continues to to be excellent and that we sustain support for that. But we need alums. We need our legislative partners. We need our corporate partners, our government partners, all to come to the table in an umbrella of the university to continue to push us forward and sustain what we have done and continue to move forward and become the top eighteen ninety and the top among our peer competitors across the southern region. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Williams. One question that I may pose to you. Would you be available if trustees want to query you? If you have the vice of counsel to do so while we're in executive session?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Pleasure to the board. What time should we begin executive session? How much time do you need between this and switching over to the other, the other site? Fifteen minutes, half hour?
Thirty minutes, if possible.
Fifteen, if we can.
Fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes. Fifteen is fine with me.
Fifteen.
Okay. We'll see you on the next site and at two forty-five.
Mr. President, will that be at ten till, at two forty? Is that?
Uh.
Will Reagan V?
It's two thirty-one now.
Okay, well, all right, two, two forty-five. All right.
Two forty-five.
Trustee Williams, that's a different link?
Yeah, it is a different link. Yes.
Okay.
It is. My secretary sent it out yesterday.
I got it.
You would like her to resend it. We can do that.
No, I got it. Thank you.
Okay.
I will, I will ask for that. I'm I'm not at my desktop. So if it could, if you don't mind, Mr. Stake, I appreciate it.
All right. We will, my legal assistant will do that. Thank you.
All right. Signing off.